Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Cedar Falls Board of Education, and I would like to welcome you here this evening. We're glad to have such a wonderful audience. With that, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved by Susie. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Jeff Orvis. Do I have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on now to public comment. I'm going to ask Steve Corbin to come to the microphone to speak this evening.
Three minutes or less, is that correct ma'am?
Yes, thank you.
Ma'am. I'm Steve Corbin, resident of Cedar Falls, and I have a couple disclosures for you. I've served on the Denver Community School District Board of Education for 11 years. About half of those years I was on the negotiating table for, in behalf of the people. Also, you need to know that also I've served on the negotiating table for the teachers at Southeast Polk School District many years ago. So, tonight I want to commend the superintendent, school board, teachers, parents of children in the community, to try to get on the other side of the table and try to understand where the other group is coming from. And I also hope that everyone will also understand that our currently Republican-controlled governorship and legislature has, in essence, placed everyone between a rock and a hard place. When Governor Culver was in office, the average allowable growth supplemental state aid was 3.5 percent. When Governor Branstad was elected in 2010, his first year of office, the growth was 0.0 percent. During the Branstad-Reynolds era, the average allowable growth dropped in half of the Culver years to 1.7. During the last 15 months, when the Republican took control of the entire Capitol, allowable growth has now dropped even further to 1.1 percent for last year, and as you well know, 1 percent for next year. So, teachers, I have a question for you. If you were the superintendent or on the school board, knowing that you only get 1 percent allowable growth, but you knew that student transportation costs, for example, went up 37 percent over the past five years, or building operational costs went up 19 percent over five years, or knew the cost of employee insurance went up 29 percent over 29 years, what would you do? Well, the teachers or the school district's been forced into a situation to rethink their cash reserves that they must keep for a rainy day or when the uncontrollable costs keep increasing. Now, superintendent and school board, you're not left off the hook. When the Republican-controlled legislature and governorship recently dismantled collective bargaining, that was a travesty of our democracy system, of the public sector especially, and employee bargaining rights, period ended. I commend you to get on the other side of the table and reflect on how low employee morale must be when a school district will only negotiate on wages. You probably know this, but for the public record, there's a superintendent and a school board that's not too far south of us who is discussing, they are discussing, with the teachers, the pre-2017 collective bargaining issues. As they know, if they want to keep and attract good teachers, they have to be more flexible. And the school district is biting into their cash reserves, and having been on the school board, I know how dangerous that can be, but they are, and they're hoping and they're praying and crossing their fingers that this fall's election will turn things around. So, we all know it's a crime to only have 1 percent allowable growth for both the school districts and the teachers, and with a grandchild who's in first grade at Lincoln Elementary, it affects me personally. Which brings me back to my introductory remark. The Iowa Republican-controlled governorship and legislature has created this rock and a hard place situation for all of us. Everyone needs to have more empathy, understanding, try to get on the other side of the table, and come Tuesday, November 6th, ensure that Iowa will never again have a one-party controlled Capitol. I thank you, time that you have given me to speak and address you, and best wishes to all parties as they try to get on the other side of the table. It's imperative we do that for our teachers, for our support staff, for the students, for the community, and for yourselves. Best wishes to you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you very much, Steve, for your comments. We have one more this evening that would like to speak, Joe Corden. Don't see Joe here. All right. Moving on to communications, our student board report. Arlo, I'm sorry, I lost track of you. Would you, Arlo, would you like to come to the microphone? Thank you. There are some seats up front if you'd like to come up and sit down instead of stand.
Please.
Yes.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Arlo.
So, I, for those of you who don't know, I come here every meeting and I just talk about what some of the student groups at the high school are doing. To clarify.
And he does a tremendous job. Don't look away.
So, yesterday, our senior leadership group held a prom event at Vicford Cottage, one of the local nursing homes. It was a really nice event, so we all got dressed up in our prom attire, and we ate and chatted and danced with the residents. Student Senate also worked with Dunkerton Student Body to put on a successful 5K in Dunkerton this weekend for the Do Better, Be Better Scholarship, which will be awarded pretty soon. Student Senate's Earth Day campus cleanup was postponed until next weekend, but we are still planning on having it next Sunday afternoon. Hopefully, the weather will continue to be nice and we can go outside and clean up our campus. Yeah. Today, our MVP leaders took the incoming 10th graders on tours of the building as part of the sophomore orientation event. This day kind of always helps the ninth graders get acclimated to the new environment, and that allows them to ask questions about what they'll be experiencing next year. Later this week, we also have our awards assembly at the high school, which recognizes the members of the different student organizations, as well as the recipient of some of the school scholarships and the different departmental awards. The junior leadership group has decided on the prom theme for this year, which will be Enchanted Garden. And a few members of the school community will also be recognized at the Exceptional Effort Awards Event, which will be held this Wednesday in collaboration with some of the other local schools. That's all I have. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for Arlo.
How many days left?
Oh, gosh. It's about a month.
You guys really lucked out with the whole snow day thing this year.
I know.
Thank you, Arlo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on now to the newsletter. No?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
First off, thanks everybody for being here this evening. We greatly appreciate it. Within our newsletter, you will probably see some of your own faces up on the screen, so that's a good thing. I am going to do my best to replicate the high level of the bar that Janelle typically sets with the communication update, and certainly try to share some of the great things that are happening across our district. First and foremost, I think this is an important note. The Department of Education just released graduation rates about a week ago, and we view this as an entire pre-K-12 accomplishment because of the work that happens. A, to get our kids acclimated and ready for the work that needs to be done throughout our system, but B, I think the important work as we look at making sure that they feel welcome across our system as well. So, it's not only helping them as they transition in, but also transition out for graduation. And now we are over 96 percent, one of the highest in the state, which is tremendous. We have one of our students that received the recognition of being a top 10 outstanding student by the Des Moines Register this weekend, Leah Fairchild. You can see, and I think we've talked about Leah in the past, she was one of our students that received a 36 perfect score on their ACT this past year, one of three, with a GPA of 4.15. And she is very, very passionate. She talks about in the article about dance and very excited about going into the next venture of dance at the next level. This past week, we were very honored to have four teachers recognized as Gold Star Teachers by the McElroy Trust, had the opportunity to go out. And what I'm most impressed by these pictures, every one of our teachers are with their students. And I'm not sure if you see that in all districts, but when you look at the students, and certainly not only their pride, but certainly their happiness with their teachers and their classroom receiving this award, it's really neat. Here is Ashley Cardamone, who's an art teacher at Holmes Junior High. Tammy Fromm, a special ed teacher at Cedar Falls High School, and certainly just the excitement by the students, you can see there. Merritt Beisner, a kindergarten teacher at Cedar Heights Elementary. You can also see the students there with their service dog as well, which is very, very exciting. And finally, Ben Beiersdorfer, band at Pete Junior High. And these were probably some of the most excited students, especially when you get to that junior high age that we had for our Gold Star Teacher Announcement. It was really, really neat to see. Couple other items. Susan Langen, high school counselor, was recognized as the YWCA Youth Advocate Woman of Persimmon Award for the advocacy that she does for all students across the region, which was very neat to see, as well as we had some people recognized by the Cedar Valley Character Counts Association. One was a sixth grade student, Matty Gallagher, at Orchard Hill, and then also the principal, which was the educator of character of the year, Andrea Christopher, at Orchard Hill Elementary as well. This was a neat item, and we'll have an agenda item here just in a bit about this individual as well. But this was an opportunity for students actually at Hanson to think big for Earth Day. And what they did was they came up with a project or a process potentially to have Hanson transition to at least partially solar-powered. And they sat down and as sixth graders did a wonderful job presenting about what that idea would look like and how to put that into action. And they worked with Mr. Nesker, the Director of Business Affairs. We actually had our coaches this past Thursday and Friday down at Iowa ASCD, and they were presenting actually to a packed house. They had to actually bring in additional chairs, I am told, to be able to finish that presentation, because I think our reputation for what our instructional coaches, our teacher leaders do for students for the learning in the classroom is pretty profound, and it shows just by the number of people that came out to listen and learn from them. We had students from Mrs. Miller's class perform at UNI. Their name is Rainbow Rocks, and certainly a neat opportunity for those students. We had multiple ninth grade students down at the Road Less Travel Conference, which is focused on women going into STEM careers and career exploration. And this was just a representation of those ninth grade students that were down there for that STEM opportunity. Then we also had our Aldrich staff, our staff that are going to transition to Aldrich Elementary next year when that opens up in August, that had the opportunity to tour that building, and really neat opportunity. This was, Janelle always puts this together, but this was actually a tweet that I'd sent out, and certainly a neat opportunity to showcase kind of some of the work that's going on there and that staff transitioning to that building. So, we'd be remiss without kind of the comment we said to Arlo. We do have, well, we have had several snow days this year and inclement weather days, so our last day of school is Tuesday, June 5th. I know there's some flexibility, at least at the high school level, with finals, just to make sure we accommodate some of those opportunities that families may have as they look at getting out early. So, that means that Tuesday, June 5th, is the last day of school. And typically, there's a big sigh when that happens from the audience. Finally, just a couple different items. That Janelle always puts in the communications update. Every two weeks, we send out a newsletter. If you are interested in getting that newsletter, please either email Janelle, or you can subscribe on our district website, and it's just full of information about the great things that are happening across our district. Also, if you'd like to follow us on any social media outlets, we are, have a lot of different components going on and being pushed out through those different venues. Questions?
Do we have our last staff day? Sorry to disappoint the staff that are in the room, but...
Wednesday, which would be June 6th.
Okay.
So, that will be the final staff day. Typically, what we do is we go through with just different components of checkout, and typically that day gets wrapped up fairly conveniently and quickly.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you. Moving on then to the IASBO presentation.
Yes, we have Nancy Blau with us this evening to be able to give a presentation.
Hi, thanks for having me. Doug says I need to move this down because I'm a little vertically challenged. So, we're here to honor Doug tonight. So, Doug, if you can come down here so that I can look you in the eye. I'm the Executive Director of the Iowa Association of School Business Officials, and every year we give an award, and it's the Professional Leadership Award, and it's the highest honor that our association bestows upon a member. And Doug exemplifies that award. If you look in the dictionary, you would see his picture beside it. He's... I have had the tremendous honor of working with Doug as he's served on our board and worked throughout the years, many, many years. I mean, I think he's been at this about 32 years. But in this world, there are givers and takers, and Doug is a giver through and through. He has served our membership in many ways. He's been a mentor to them. He's helped develop new programs. He's continued programs that we have and made them better. He's, it's exciting to be able to work with Doug. I met with him just for a few minutes before I came in here tonight, and I told him a couple of situations we have going on that are kind of behind-the-scenes kind of stuff. And I could just see the wheels starting to turn, and he's already given me some suggestions, and he'll help me get through this. I know he will. He's a true leader. He mentors. We probably turn over our membership about 10 percent every year, and he embraces the new people and helps them get through and learn. And I also have with me, Danell Gonnerman serves on the Iowa ASBO Board currently, and part of this award is Doug gets a $1,000 scholarship that he gets to present to a student of his choice, so Danell will present that. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm going to give it right back to you, so it's for safety.
And congratulations, yes.
Thank you. I guess I just want to thank the board and the administration. My staff came here tonight, which was a surprise. I really appreciate you guys taking time out of your day. And of course, everybody else in the room, that was a pleasant surprise. Have such a large group here tonight. And I would be remiss without saying that my lovely wife, Dottie, and my youngest daughter, Sarah, is here as well, and my family has supported me in all of this, and I couldn't have done it without them, but thank you for everything. Appreciate it.
And what a neat honor for the Lifetime Achievement Award, and certainly well-deserved. And what I think Doug is most proud of is not only the relationships he's built and some of the other aspects within the role, but that $1,000 scholarship, to be able to allow for a student graduating from Cedar Falls to go into potentially a finance field is so exciting and so rewarding, and I know for Doug as well. So, congratulations.
Yeah, that's actually going to be kind of fun.
Yeah. Really neat.
Thank you. All right. Give you just a minute to catch your breath, and we'll move on to the secretary's financial report. Okay.
And we have the monthly financials for March. If we can get them up on the screen, please. There we are. Thank you very much. And we'll walk through these. In the general fund for the month of March, you'll see that we had revenue of just under $3.9 million and expenses of about $4.37 million. So, you can see our ending fund balance was just over $5.5 million, roughly about where we were from a year ago. We were at $5.44 million a year ago, so roughly about the same where we were one year ago. In the management fund, and I'll remind everybody, the management fund is for property liability, casualty insurance, and auto insurance and that sort of thing. You can see the revenue and expenditures for the month, and so we had an ending balance of $796,000, and that's a little bit above where we were, as you can see from one year ago. In the capital projects fund, which is the fund that we're using to construct Aldrich Elementary and the projects at North Cedar and Orchard Hill, revenue for the month of $33,500, that's all interest. We did have an investment come due in March, and so we were able to glean some interest off of that. And you can see the $1.84 million, that's all expenses associated with three elementary school projects. So, we have an ending balance of $13,762,000. In the statewide one cent local option sales tax fund, you can see our revenue received for the month in interest, $353,000. Expenditures, the $20,000 that you see there, that's where the expenditures associated with the exploration of a potential new high school, as we're working on that. And then the $218,000 is a transfer out to the debt service fund to pay the revenue bonds that are due out of Fund 33. So, we had an ending balance of $8,242,000, and you can see where that is in comparison from a year ago. And just for the audience, if you don't tune in and watch this on a monthly basis, we have to hold $995,000 of that back as a reserve as part of the one of the revenue bonds that we have with the bank, and then the rest of it, the $7.2 million, is basically unreserved at this point, although we will be using the vast majority of that as we finish up the three elementary school projects. Physical plant and equipment levy, revenue of $64,800 and expenditures of $223,000, that's for various projects. For the board's knowledge, the two U school buses that we bought, that you allowed us to purchase, that was paid in March, and so that's the biggest piece of that. And you can see our revenue ended, the balance was $2894,000, and that compares slightly down from where it was one year ago. Debt service levy, the revenue for the month, that's a combination of property tax and interest, and there you can see that transfer in from Fund 33. So, we have an ending balance of $2,454,000. And as far as expenditures are concerned, our debt service expenditures are twice a year. We make one payment in December, and the other payment is on June 1st. So, that's why you see no expenditures in that month. Student activity, a pretty normal month in comparison to previous months for the month of March, and you can see an ending balance of $585,000. It wasn't normal in the fact that our team won the state basketball tournament, but from the book perspective, it was a normal month. Trusted agency account, these are dollars that we hold in, from other institutions. You can see the revenue and expenditures for the month, $224,297 for the fund balance. Enterprise fund, this is the food service account, lunch fund. You can see the revenue and expenditures at $728,000 was the balance, and that's up a little bit from a year ago. That's a little bit misleading, as we will have some transfers at the end of the year that'll bring that down because of some changes that federal government and the Department of Ed are requiring us to do for expenditures. So, that'll change a little bit when we get to the end of the year. There's the coffee shop fund at the high school. You can see they have a little over $5,900 in the bank as of the end of March. And then the River Hills Agency Account, for those, again, in the audience, the school district is the fiscal agent for the River Hills Consortium. These are basically all flow-through dollars. We send out the invoices, we receive the invoices, then we turn around and pay the AEA, Central Rivers AEA, excuse me, and they're the, who we have a contract with to operate the school. And you can see we had tuition in, $757,000. We paid out, $534,000. We had $253,000 left over that came in late, and of course, that is being paid out here this month in April. And so, you can see that that's what that balance is. And with that, I would entertain any questions from the board.
Any questions for Doug?
I see that we have Collins at 1% on our money market, LSBE's at .75. Have those, have they been raising those as the Fed's been raising rates, so we're getting a little more interest off of our...
My able assistant does a very good job of being able to occasionally ask, is that the best you can do? And the banking institutions have been cooperative, shall we say.
Excellent. Good.
Good question. Any other questions for Doug? Hearing none, then we'll place the secretary's financial report on file for audit. Moving on now to item F on the agenda, the proposed list of 2018 graduates. Arlo, is your name on that list? Okay.
It was, Arlo.
It was. So, yes, this is really kind of an exciting time, something that really kind of shows the importance of our work. It's the opportunity to approve the proposed list of 2018 graduates, and these are the graduates that we anticipate will meet all the graduation requirements and fully recommend them for the board to approve, so when they walk across that stage here at the end of May, that they will be duly noted graduates and alumni of the Cedar Falls Community School District.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the 2018 graduates?
You do. I move that the Cedar Falls Community School Board of Education approve awarding the diplomas for the graduating class of 2018 contingent upon satisfactory completion of graduation requirements as attested to by the high school principal.
Thank you, Jenny. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments regarding this list? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right. Now to item G on the agenda, approval of the Managed Print Services Contract.
Okay, I got, that would be me again, and we've got one more short presentation that we can throw up on the screen. A little background, three years ago, the board approved the school district entering into a managed print service contract. The purpose of this contract was to have an outside firm come in and supply all the toner for all of our laser printers throughout the school district, as well as service those printers in the event that they were to fail, and in the event that they were not repairable to replace that printer at no cost to the school district. While there's a cost, it's all a part of the contract. And so, we've, we're at the tail end of that three-year agreement, and it's time to renew the agreement. Again, here are some of the contract details, if I can get it up on the screen here for you. We have, as part of our requirement, they have a maximum four-hour response time. And like I said, if we do have a machine that's not repairable, they have to provide an equal speed replacement printer, and even to the point that the same manufacturer of that printer, if at all possible. They have to provide online telephone and work order system, as well as help desk, and it would be a 36-month contract when the district has a 12-month out-out, so that if the performance level of that service contractor doesn't meet the expectations, the district has, can opt out at any time during that first 12 months, literally for any reason. So, it's behooved on the supplier or the firm to perform. We had a number of bids come in this year for that, and you can see them on the screen, and it would be our recommendation to accept a quote from Access Systems here in Cedar Falls, Iowa, to take over the management and maintenance of those machines for the next three years. We are going to be switching from Marco Technologies, and you can see that the cost difference was such that it made, I think, in the best interest of the district to switch. So, that would be our recommendation.
Any questions or comments for Doug?
I can say, in summary, this has really helped our IT staff out. You know, we're, with the number of Chromebooks, iPads, individual laptops that staff have, all the technology that we have in the district, it's really, that time has really helped them off that they don't have to worry about this. The vendor takes care of all of this, and they're just sort of informed of what's going on, but we really appreciate Marco and the work that they've done over the last three years, and I will say, Access, Marco set a really high standard, so we're hoping you can keep up to that.
You can see there's 166, I think, machines, printers, that are a part of this agreement across our district. So, it's a fairly significant number, as well as when you look at the cost of toner and ink cartridges, it certainly not only saves time, but is also most cost-effective for us as a district.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the Managed Print Service Contract?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School Board of Education approve the bid for, from Access Systems, Cedar Falls, Iowa, for managed printer services beginning July 1st, 2018.
Thank you, Susie. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Jeff Orvis. Do I have any questions?
So, our funding is very rigid, of course, all the silos that we, which silo does this, which category?
This would be all general, general fund.
We can't take this out of Peppel since it's equipment-related?
No. As much as I would love to...
I was going to say, this is equipment because...
And the reason why is it's not considered an insurance policy.
So, we can buy the printers out of, for example, Peppel, but we can't maintain the...
Unless you wanted to enter into an insurance policy where the cost per unit would be more than what the cost per unit is under this contract.
So, you're basically putting in the purchase price this type of an arrangement.
Right. And I explored that pretty heavily again this time around, and yes, it's a different fund, and you could save $20,000 out of the general fund by doing this, but it would cost significantly more than the $20,000 to make that premium payment out of the management fund.
Got you. Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
And that's the balance, to make sure that we're fiscally prudent with the taxpayer dollars. Because Doug said, some districts do do that, and we want to make sure that we're balancing that to ensure that it's the best return for the dollars expended.
And of course, the management fund is all property tax dollars, so that's a direct impact on all the residents and property owners in the community.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Moving on now to the superintendent's report.
So, a couple of different items. And again, this is something we've already talked about with Arlo and just the previous approval of the graduate list, but we have commencement May 27th. We have down that Jenny and Eric will be there to be able to present diplomas, and we greatly appreciate that. That's always such a neat event and opportunity to showcase, again, our tremendous staff, students, parents, and their accomplishment. We have a retirement reception Wednesday, May 23rd, 2018, at 4:15 PM at Pheasant Ridge. That's always such a neat, again, event where we recognize those who are serving our district that may be transitioning away from our district. And those that have been there, it's so rewarding and neat to be able to have that time and discussion and just kind of a collective emphasis on years of service for kids. Board retreat, and I'll probably just send out a doodle if that's okay. But as we just discussed earlier with Jeff's question, June 6th is now our staff checkout day. It's the last day for staff, and that was going to be our board admin retreat day. So that won't work because none of our administrators would be there, which would present a little bit of a challenge with that being a retreat day. So we'll just need to look at a potential another day that might work for people, knowing that June is challenging.
Okay.
So that'll be a challenge.
Any questions for Dr. Pattee?
This is a short meeting, and it's one of those aspects where we've had longer meetings over the course of the last several months, but it's, is a shorter meeting. So apologize to those in the audience that were expecting to have a longer meeting.
Any questions or comments or concerns from board members? Hearing...
I just want to acknowledge the crowd. I appreciate everybody being here. You know, we are in the middle of negotiations right now, so there's not an opportunity to discuss any of that at the board table. But it's clear why you're here, and I just want to acknowledge that. And thank you all for what you do, so...
Thank you, Eric. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's been moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. And thank you all again for coming. We appreciate it.